Good evening, everyone. Welcome to council meeting October third, two thousand and twenty-three. If anyone in the audience needs amplifying headphones, please raise your hand and we'll bring those to you. All right, let's all rise for the pledge. Donna, can you do a roll call, please?
I will. Councilmember Bod is. Councilmember Bod is joining us via Zoom. There he is. Councilmember Sherman here. Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Marinasco.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember McDowell.
Present.
And Councilmember Peterson is absent this evening.
Is there a motion to excuse Councilmember Peterson?
I will move that we excuse Councilmember Peterson second to meeting.
Right, so motion and second to excuse Councilmember Peterson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, council having late changes to the agenda tonight? The manager, any late changes?
Nothing for me tonight, Mr. Mayor.
James? All right, does the council have any board reports to share? All right, moving on. Has everyone reviewed the consent agenda?
Yes.
We have a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda as published.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion to second to approve the consent agenda as published. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is a proclamation for white cane awareness. Right. Whereas the white cane which every blind citizen of Shelton, Washington has the right to carry, demonstrate, and symbolize the ability to achieve a full independent life in the capacity to work in competitive employment. And whereas the white cane by allowing every blind person to move freely and safely from place to place makes it possible for the blind to fully participate and contribute to our society and to the life and to live the lives they want. And whereas every citizen should be aware that the law requires that motorists and cyclists exercise appropriate caution when approaching a blind person carrying a white cane. And whereas Washington state law allows calls upon employers, both public and private, to be aware and utilize the employment skills of a blind citizen by recognizing their worth as individuals and their productive capacities. Now, therefore, the city of Shelton Council does now hereby proclaim October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three as White Cane Awareness Day in the city of Shelton. And I will sign this tonight. And if anybody wants to speak on this, we'll wait till a public comment, which looks like it may be about thirty minutes or so, I'm thinking. That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, that's it.
All right, our only business item is a resolution for the sale surplus real estate park director advisor Jordan Crumples has details.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight I am bringing to you a piece of our property that we have on North Cliff Neighborhood Park. It may be a minute. So you see here, this is the property at North Cliff Neighborhood Park. The outline in red is the full property and the subject that we're speaking on tonight is the yellow box within the property. Um, so it was identified that there's a fence line within the park's boundary that has been there for about thirteen years now. The neighboring property owner purchased the property with the fence already in place and assumed the subject area to be part of his ownership. Um, so tonight, the piece of property that we're looking at is below over two thousand square feet. Um, and the park itself is below over seven thousand. Um, so upon resolving the conflict issue with the property owner and with the park's advisory committee, we're recommending to surplus and sale that area to the property owner. Um, this piece of land, it wouldn't have any negative impact on the recreational value of the park. Um, the property owner did a survey, boundary line adjustment application, and agreed to pay for all of the appraised value of the area. Um, and then we would be looking at hoping to push it for further consideration. Um, market value of the overall property equals about two thousand dollars from the appraised value. Um, and the portion would be is six thousand. So that's what the property owner would be uh, giving us to the city if we surplus the property then. And now any questions?
All right, thank you. Donna, does anyone have a public comment?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone want to speak on this? All right, do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, we'd place resolution number one, two, nine, one, dash, zero, eight, two, three on the October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three action agenda for further consideration.
Second.
All right, comments or questions?
I have a question. Did you say he owns the property?
So he, the property right next to it, he owns, obviously, it's where he lives, but the property line, where the line is, where that yellow line is.
Okay.
There's a line that is, there's a fence border line that's there that he's been utilizing as his own, but it's actually part of the property.
Okay.
So that section is what we would be surplusing then because one is already using it. There's not much of it to us.
That'll be turned into a little park.
No, that little section he would own.
Okay.
The rest of the park is obviously safe. The north of the property.
Okay, yeah, okay, I got it.
Yeah, so then the red is the whole part, that little yellow sliver could be the piece that we're portioning over to the property owner.
Okay, I got it. Thanks.
Yeah. Thanks. So basically, the fence line doesn't change from where it is today, correct? So like the residents in Terrace Heights or whatever that use or North Cliff, um, they would notice no difference.
Correct. It's contiguous with that property owner as well. The fence line remains the same. You've actually just installed that new fence line uh, in anticipation installation, that new place structure. And it would, it would, it abuts the existing fence line that is in place. There was a uh, kind of a tool shed, if you will, garden shed and some landscaping that were in place. And again, with my thirty years here at the city of Shelton is something that I didn't realize was in place. Um, it was actually transferred over from the previous owner when um, the current owner's purchased it thirteen years ago. So thirteen years ago. Yeah, so it's been some time and um, if we've had the question about eminent domain and the city's not subject to eminent domain. Uh, so per good reviews, so um, we've obviously talked to the property owner. Uh, we have a partial recreation citizens advisory committee that's taken this under consideration. They're making the recommendation um, to move forward with the uh, with the surplus and sale.
Sorry, one follow up. Is there actually access into the park from the Terrace Heights neighborhood?
There is.
Okay, yeah. Great, thank you.
Yep. All right, any other questions? All right, we have a motion to second to place resolution number one, two, nine, one, dash, zero, eight, two, three on October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three action agenda for further consideration. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Right, under our action agenda. Now onto the action agenda, Finance Director Mike Giddens has a resolution for us on electronic fund transfer policy.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. There have been no changes to this. Um, as a reminder, this recognizes that the city uses various electronic payment methods and formalizes a process and procedure and protocols to make sure that these payments are done in a manner that protects both city and those that will pay.
Right. Donna, anyone sent up a public comment?
No, there isn't, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone like to speak? All right. Reading, we have a reading of resolution number one, two, eight, eight, dash, zero, eight, two, three.
Resolution number one, two, eight, eight, dash, zero, eight, two, three. A resolution of the council of the city of Shelton, Washington, adopting an electronic funds transfer or E F T policy and procedures.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve resolution one, two, eight, eight, dash, zero, eight, two, three as presented.
Second. All right, comments or questions? All right, we have a motion to second to approve resolution number one, two, eight, eight, dash, zero, eight, two, three as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Right, our next action item is Gateway Property Project Manager Erin Nace. Information for us about a final acceptance of the Western Gateway Project.
Mayor Council, uh, thank you very much for letting me be here in front of you tonight. I was reviewing folks here in Shelton. Um, I'm gonna bring a couple of projects for to you. I'll first start talking about our Western Gateway project that was finished. Both projects were completed um, prior to me getting here, but I've done all the research and uh, we are ready to close these projects out. So as far as the Western Gateway, maybe you could show the, just the pictures. It's part of the briefing that's in there. If it's not, that's okay. Mayor Council, if you recall, this particular project, um, was basically a railroad avenue down here. The intent was to replace the twelve inch or replace the water line with a new twelve inch class fifty-two ducted iron line. Uh, that was completed, um, as well as uh, some improvements to curb and gutter sidewalks, entrances. And candidly, if you just go out there, which I did today, go out and take a look at it, it's just a beautiful gateway into our city. So um, uh, we're looking to uh, close this project out, um, just a little bit about uh, we awarded a bid in about two point five million dollars. Um, there were uh, about four change orders, totally about eighty-seven thousand. The final amount for this project uh, is two million, six hundred ninety-five thousand, one hundred seventy-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents. So uh, what we're looking for, uh, hopefully close this project out. This will close the contract out as well as the contract. Um, and that's our intent. So if you have any questions, that's a before and if there should be an after one, it's good.
Oh.
It's really nice, beautiful.
Very good.
Good to see the wooden uh, water mains uh, gone.
Donna, does anyone have a public comment?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody like to speak on the Gateway Project? All right, we have a reading of resolution number one, two, nine, two, dash, zero, nine, two, three.
Resolution number one, two, nine, two, dash, zero, nine, two, three. A resolution of the council of the city of Shelton, Washington, accepting the Western Gateway Project as final and complete.
Thank you, Donna. Comments or questions?
So thank you to staff and all of our partners and contractors that we work with on this project. Again, I agree with you, Erin. Uh, two point six million dollar gateway. We did a great job on making every dollar go as far as we could and yeah, very, very nice project. Um, just again proves our staff are capable of doing million dollar projects and kind of a short timeline with uh, you know, limited resources. And again, um, projects like this are a great success and very thankful for the team for pulling it off. So thank you.
Mayor, just quickly, and I apologize, um, Jay had requested then, this is part of the motion, um, with regard to awaiting the, the three touches. And I, I apologize for that. I'm not trying to deviate from that, but the intent being that you've seen these projects, we're just trying to close it out. So that's just a request and it's openly your discretion. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Um, beautiful. You want to just get down on the ground and kiss it? Cause it's so pretty.
It is very nice.
Um, we hope that it will stay beautiful for years to come. I know it won't, but I know there'll be wear and tear on it. I think one of the nicest things were the mailbox is on the pole.
I saw that.
Yeah, because we had mailboxes falling over on the old wood stands and now they're all similar. So it was very, very good job. It was fun watching it and it went smooth.
Yeah.
It really did.
It's great. It's great. We get the, the book, Michelle signed in there, I think.
Yeah. Yeah. We really enjoyed walking on that sidewalk. It's been, it's really nice.
Yeah.
Walkability for sure is a big deal, obviously.
Yeah, I, I can.
And the more to come, also, we got some projects trying to get a bid here shortly.
Yeah, I concur with uh, Deputy Mayor and everyone else. What a great project and staff did a great job. Matter of fact, I got off that exit this weekend with my seventeen year old and he learned how to drive the driver's school. Uh, he was on that road and he goes, hey, this road is different. I said, yes, it is.
Mr. Mayor, as a reminder as well, uh, a significant part of that project was, was funded through both ARPA funding and in-state T I B funds as well. So uh, we're contributing local dollars and matching those uh, to really get some of these projects through to fruition. And so multiplying our local dollars into uh, into projects like that in the best season of our resources.
And the T I B is a transportation improvement board.
Correct, yep, I should say.
All right. All right, any other comments?
It's really nice to have the, the word closeout, final project, final closeout. So good job.
Be nice when we get it all the way to the, all the way to one-on-one.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that takes some counties.
And that would be nice.
Yeah, maybe. Yep, okay, we have a motion in a second to waive the three.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
We don't have a motion.
We haven't had a motion.
We have motion.
I move to waive the three touch rule and adopt resolution one, two, nine, two, dash, zero, nine, two, three as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second to waive the three touch rule and adopt resolution number one, two, nine, two, dash, zero, nine, two, three as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is James still on? Yeah.
There he is.
Okay, got it. I saw you.
I was aye.
Okay, okay. Now Erin has information about the closeout of our C C, C Street landfill cleanup project.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Top project in the sense that uh, if you clean up, um, basically, uh, as you probably all know, coal is for the delving sites in nineteen twenty-eight or something. It's been opened and stopped in the mid-eighties. Um, trash, garbage, and uh, W W T P, uh, halings, they went in there. Um, oftentimes, uh, as you get into these things, you start seeing additional things and that kind of happened here in this instance in the sense that the contamination that was identified actually extended a little bit further. So you'll see here a significant change order of about eight hundred thousand dollars to basically, in essence, the intent here was not, and I, I apologize, as I said, in the, in the briefing, we're gonna remove them into your absolute app, actually, the intent was to cap it and that's what they did. So they actually had to extend it, extend the fabric, the a barrier that doesn't allow water through, but the intent that if the water goes through the soil, it hits this barrier and it sheets off. So ideally, none of that contamination then go further down in the ground, ground water. So there was a significant, obviously, uh, change order associated with this and that was to deal with that. Just me grab the. So uh, guys awarded uh, you resolution number twelve forty-six, one oh two, two, um, to move forward the brownfield construction. I think the amount of one point three nine million dollars or so. Um, there were five change order orders that totaled about a million, one. Um, uh, for a final payout of two million, five hundred ninety-two thousand, two hundred seventy-three dollars and sixty-three cents. What this actually taught us, the intent here is we're, we're just closing out the contract tonight. Understand, under these types of instances when you have to do cleanup, there's typically monitoring component associated with it. So we are not completely closing, closing on the contract with the intent that next year we did a, a topo survey this year. Next year, we'll do another to a white, total survey. The intent is to make sure that nothing is settled. If that passes, great. And then additionally, we have five more years of water quality monitoring. There's eight wells out there that we have to pull, um, to see if it's actually bleaching down even further. So it, it, it's hard to swallow a million dollars, it's never easy, but the reality is that most of this was actually paid by ecology. About two point one million or so was paid by ecology. So this is really a good benefit. I'm kind of an environmental guy sometimes myself. Um, I think that's a real positive thing for sitting. I, again, I really do, in protection of citizens. So with that, if you have any other questions.
All right, Donna, anyone have a public comment?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone like to speak on the C Street landfill closeout? All right, we have a reading of resolution number one, two, nine, three, dash, zero, nine, two, three.
Resolution number one, two, nine, three, dash, zero, nine, two, three. A resolution of the council of the city of Shelton, Washington, accepting the C Street landfill cleanup construction project as final and complete.
Thank you, Donna. Comments or questions?
I have a question. I don't know. It says closeout. I mean, it's really not getting closed out, is it?
We're, yes, ma'am, we're actually closing the contract out. We do want to say that we're closing out the contract with Brownfield. We actually did the work.
Okay.
So we need to finally legally end that. But with the caveat that there's ongoing uh, observation that we need to do, we heard of the testing.
So, okay, so it's a contract that's closing out.
Right, yeah, the construction portion of the project.
All right.
This, this was a very, very long project. I mean, I think this.
Oh, my goodness.
The talk started about this landfill probably in the eighties and was ignored from the eighties and nineties and the two thousands. And somewhere around seven years ago, I think I was sitting out there, they started talking about C Street landfill again. And the commission then decided that it's time to get this landfill cleaned up and start applying for grants from ecology and, and getting this thing started. And it's been a long, long time and I'm glad that the commission and now the council has supported cleaning up this landfill. So uh,
Mayor, I will say that having bid at other agent local agencies, I'm not saying they shy away from it, but the reality is that they do just because of what can happen. And that is a million dollar change order. So I think the council consists, you all need to be proud of yourselves for taking that decision and giving that clean up. Cause I think that's very positive thing for this city.
And the remaining city funds were, were, were used out of the solid waste uh, account that we, when we sold the garbage company. So that money was set aside for this project um, as well. All right.
And just once again, thank you again on managing through this and getting the next chapter completed. Yeah, it's, uh, it'd be actually nice, I think, at some point, uh, probably not this time of the year, but uh, to, to do a drive-through. Again, we, it's probably been like four or five years since we've been out there and um, but it'd be good to just boots on the ground and check out the site once you're in a better.
You can get some more pictures too. It was really interesting on the, on the south end, near Miles Sand and Gravel. Um, it was about forty feet deep. They were digging down to find, find the remainder of that garbage that was buried over time. And you know, tailings and, and you know, and dirt pushed over the top. So um, it was just.
Some pictures of old cars.
Yeah, there was, there's bumpers and, and a few things like that. There, there's, Mary will have a couple of pictures. So there's the yeah, that doesn't, that doesn't show the depth of uh, of that, that south side, but it was, there, there was some big equipment for a project in, in the city of Shelton, out there moving dirt and.
I don't know anybody else who was old enough or young enough, but I used to go with my dad there to dump garbage when I was a little girl.
There you go. What's cool about this, you can actually see the contamination.
Yeah, layer in there.
Dark areas.
It's on the second call, of course.
I'm just excited that I get to be on council, sitting here while this is closing out. So that's kind of cool.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Is that hydro seat? Is that succeeded?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Kind of.
It's, it's right.
Like a call course.
It's to be the motion. Do we have a motion?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we're not waiting to three touch on this.
Yes, we are.
Mr. Mayor, I moved to waive the three touch rule and approve resolution number one, two, nine, three, dash, zero, nine, two, three as presented.
Second.
All right, any more comments or questions? We have a motion to second to waive the three touch rule and adopt resolution number one, two, nine, three, dash, zero, nine, two, three as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we are at administration reports. Mark, were you giving the manager?
Absolutely. A short one for you tonight. Um, I want to uh, remind council and the community that civic center rehabilitation work has started. So you may have seen some pressure washing going on the last week or so. Um, luckily enough, we've had some raining weather. It hasn't affected um, some of the siding repairs and the paint. So we're looking forward to that in a weather window coming up so we can get uh, get this painted and sealed up before um, you know, our full breadth of winter hits us. Um, I want to recognize the Shelton Arts Commission and staff that support the Arts Commission. Uh, they recently um, put out a public art guide. So recognizing all the public art and details that uh, um, inventories at work, it's put out on the city's website. We have a brochure with the Q R codes. Let me pick that up. Download the Q R code and go and visit um, some of these art locations. That hasn't been updated for probably fifteen years or, or more, more than that, I think. So uh, we have a lot of public art in this community and um, some very impressive pieces. Uh, today, uh, Kiody Communities picked up their certificate of occupancy for Veterans Village. So really excited. That project is wrapped up and uh, they'll start placing individuals in that, that community. I think that uh, now that it's come to fruition, um, and everybody can see the work that's been put into that, how impressive the facility is and what an asset it's going to be to those uh, individuals that have sacrificed so much for our, for our nation. So um, we're really looking forward to that in place and happy to have that ongoing relationship with, with Kiody Communities in our community. Um, and then I guess just to recognize, uh, we're deep into budget season. I know we've talked about that several times. We're um, putting kind of the final touches, if you will, um, on the budget development as we speak. Uh, that'll be coming forward in November uh, to the council uh, for consideration. Uh, but uh, we're, we're quite happy, I think, with where things are. Um, it hasn't been a comfortable process, as you know, with the supplemental budget that uh, we adopted uh, mid-year this year. But um, we've been afforded some flexibility, I guess, with, with some of those changes that have, that have come about with uh, with staffing changes. And I think we're um, reexamining how we provide services here, enabled both internally and externally. Uh, so I'm excited about talking about that in November um, with, with the council and uh, and the community and informing of of the hard work that's gone into and the exciting projects that are coming forth in, in two thousand and twenty-four and beyond. So that is all I have for you tonight.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions, City Manager? Does any park updates through park?
Uh, yeah, you know, we're, we're still monitoring Brewer Park, obviously. Um, I think that the, the biggest takeaway from this is um, it hasn't solved anything. You know, we're seeing impacts in, in other places in the community. Um, met with some individuals lately that, that certainly have some, some concerns. So the ongoing communication with um, the social service providers, the homeless subcommittee that the council um, established uh, month, six weeks ago, something like that, um, is ongoing. Um, but I think at the end of the day, um, if we don't have the ability to provide housing for individuals, um, we're going to continue seeing people on the streets. So that's, that's been a realization. Um, we, we have a lot of people that are working towards this. It's just coming together uh, in a unified manner to help address that. And our community will be important.
I just had gotten, you know, positive feedback about park looking better and not people in the park. And I had to kind of bring the, bring the positivity down a little bit and basically just remind folks that, you know, while there are not people necessarily sleeping in the parks, they're sleeping in residential neighborhoods and cars um, and in front of businesses and um, the, the statistics that I'm aware of, um, you know, um, only one person was dealt with from the law enforcement perspective and then only a handful um, received services, not that they weren't offered, but
Correct.
they took services. That means the remaining folks again are, are out there in the community and we're hitting cold weather and rainy weather season. So appreciate everybody's coordinating and effort on that. So it's just a tough, tough problem for us.
Talked with Crossroads Housing's executive director this morning. Um, outreach is continuing, command lifeline, we're having regular um, communications with their board as well.
Okay.
Um, Shell Youth Connection's been fully involved in that as well as uh, Kiody Communities and their executive director. So I think we have some organizations in this community that um, have, have the ability, have the wherewithal um, to lead us to a point where, you know, we can start making some great strides, um, rather than just maybe um, you know, pushing, pushing it around, moving, moving the problem around, but actually addressing the issue permanently.
For sure. Thank you. Anything else, City Manager? All right. She seems. At this time, members of the public are invited to make public comment on any topic that's not listed on the agenda. Donna? Anyone interested in?
We do. Our first speaker is Donna Amarillis.
Hello, my name is Donna Amarillis. I live on Fifth Street, just a few blocks away from here. I'm here to inform the public about a concern incident that happened on my property last week. On Thursday morning at around eight A M, I witnessed a person approach my recital, leave in, place something underneath it and walk away into the alley. I personally have called our police department at least once a month for numerous different agents. In the effort to not waste the police department's time over what could possibly be trash, I carefully examined the item and told them when I realized it was more than just trash. After the responding officer conducted his investigation, he determined that what was found was more than likely fentanyl. I think it's important for the residents of downtown Shelton to know about this. They can easily be using certain areas as drug drops. But regardless, this is a very alarming situation, considering how dangerous fentanyl exposure is. It would be devastating for a pet or even a curious child to come in contact with this. It would be devastating for a pet or even a curious child to come in contact with this substance and it's happening so close to our homes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have one person on Zoom and that is Colleen Carmichael.
Good evening, Marinesco, Deputy Mayor Schmidt and fellow council members. My name is Colleen Carmichael and the Executive Director of Quixote Communities, I am here representing the. Providers of homeless services, including Crossroads Housing, Youth Connections, Community Lifeline, Turning Point and Quixote Communities. As you know, we had meetings regarding the encampment in Brewer Park and to to your points. Although we understand the encampment has been cleared, we know that numerous other encampments are present in and around Shelton. We are meeting on October sixteenth to continue our discussion about a navigation center and the potential use of pallet shelters. The city of Everett has provided detailed information about the use of pallet shelters. We hope to discuss potential locations, needed funding and services that will be provided at the center. We will follow up with the council and county as we move forward and as has already been mentioned. Moving the problem around is not going to solve it and the cost of keeping people on the streets is far greater than housing people. So our solution is to hope that we will have more transitional housing and also permanent supportive housing. So we're working closely with the county, all of the providers to make sure that we have a plan that we can actually enact. And although we understand pallet shelters are not the end all be all, they do last a very long time and they can be used for other services such as an emergency. When housing is needed, so they're very pliable, they can be moved very easily and they can be stored. And so that looks like a possible solution, but we'll continue to update you as that goes along. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I wanted to ask him if the Lions Club would like to speak on the proclamation tonight or explain anything about coming up to the microphone.
Mister Mayor and City Council of Shelton. As a white cane user in your city, some of you, they have seen me. Traveling around your streets. And I do fundraisers for walking a hundred miles in a hundred days, but I. Come to you this evening, thanking you for recognizing that even though a person. Uses a white cane does not mean that they're not a useful. Citizen in your community. So I just want to express my thanks and the thanks of all of the low vision. And blind people in your community, thank you.
All right. Gentlemen's name, I'm gents, so for the record for Donna. Bill, what's your last name? Thank you. Anyone else in the audience that would like to speak?
Enjoy lifelong based on a member. Wanted to text based on a few things. We hear from, oh, right, goes on the left, they're talking about housing, everything can be fixed with housing. You know, it's all housing, housing, housing. Incorrect, how many people accepted services, Joe just mentioned it, we only had a very small minority of people. Of the twenty or thirty tents that we had in Brewer Park that accepted services, how many of those people are going to accept housing? So you get your thirty houses, get these people in these houses, okay, you're only getting a three of them, because only three people accepted it. What are they gonna do with that house? They don't even know how to live in a house. I'm not saying that, you know, we don't have to try, but I don't think that housing is the avenue that we go down. I think there's a lot of other people that make the choice to be out there and that's a choice that they make. And if they if they can't live here, then they can live in another community, we don't need to make it appealing to have them be here in Mason County or Shelton. I'm glad we were able to clean up Brewer Park, did that push people out into the neighborhoods? Absolutely. Now that's going to make the neighborhoods come to you guys and you guys are going to have to listen to their concerns, just like you listen to the concerns of people that were at Brewer Park. Okay. These camps that we have around town, this this has to be a multi-pro, multi-work approach of this. We can't just do one thing and think that that's going to fix it. I already had a conversation about the no lay live law, ordinance, you know, that is something, if you guys want a good foundation to build your community off of. You have to have a good foundation, Joe wrote an article in the paper, okay, he talks about all these brands and all these different things and all these wonderful things that we can do. You could only do that with a good foundation. If you don't have a foundation to build your tourist office, your your tax dollars, your B and L, everything else, what's it for? I mean, you're gonna have people that are coming into town, I mean, how many pictures do I have to show you guys of people defecating and urinating on sidewalks and. And things like that, I'm not here to rain on your parade, but it happens and it happens all the time. Where we have, we have a code enforcement officer now, has anybody gone up and and done Teresa Johnson trail or did we just clear out the camper and find the rocks? How many people are further up there up the trail, you know, I mean, how many people are sent up there, I mean, when I was talking to Jeff about it, he said that we were proactive about it, so I guess I asked Mark. Mark, how many times would we send city workers up the Teresa Johnson or the library trail? You know, we have a lot of dangerous things that happen around town that you see on video and cameras and things like that, that. You know, I just, I want to make sure that we're not just trying to take this with one approach. Right, so to thank you for the committee for what we're doing, thank you for Brewer Park, I do appreciate it.
Right, anyone else? All right, council have any new items for discussion? All right, our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, October seventeenth at six PM, we also have a study session October tenth at six PM. This meeting is adjourned, six thirty, seventeen.